We'll call to order the Minot City Council regular meeting, roll call.
Berg?
Here.
Franzfog?
Here.
Hedberg?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Kosin?
Here.
Lehner?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Padrugula?
Here.
Schumento?
Here.
Sitma?
Here.
Strate?
Here.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number five is personal appearances. This is for any item on the -- for any -- it's the opportunity for anybody in the audience to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. And I know that Mr. Ackerman has a few comments to make.
The hearing tomorrow is at 8:30 a.m. For those that are interested in attending that hearing, that's in the Rough Rider Room at the Capitol Building. I guess just by way of a summary, this is the document that we intend to distribute to the members of the Appropriations Committee at the hearing tomorrow. What this document does is it basically on the first page describes the actions that have been taken kind of in the wake of the 2011 flood, the progress that has been made. Pages two and three identify basically the basin-wide nature of the program, so the $1 billion program, and where throughout the basin those activities are anticipated to take place. Pages four and five of the document lay out the approach. So in several of the meetings, members of the council may have heard that we intend to focus on what we're calling construction stage 1.5 in Minot, also known as phases one through four, it's been called. So we're laying this out to the legislature so that they are aware of the approach to basically grab what we're calling the lowest hanging fruit in this overall program to pull as many people out of harm's way as quickly as we can. Pages six and seven of the document, page six details the current state of funding. Of course, this is on legislators' minds. They want to know what funding is becoming available through other sources besides the state of North Dakota. So we intend to give them an update on the core's feasibility study, where we are in that process, and what we're learning as we go through it. Page seven, we try to make the case that certainly this portion of the basin, Minot residents, are suffering some serious financial hardship. And as a result of that, investment by the state of North Dakota is justified. So we're making the case in that. And then finally, on the back page of the document, this is where we lay out the plan for the remainder of this biennium and the upcoming biennium. So on that back page, basically the table at the top of that page indicates what we intend to do with the remaining funding that is in the current biennium. So in the current biennium, there was an appropriation of $40 million from the state of North Dakota. Of that $40 million, there's a current unobligated balance of about $21 million. This lays out what we intend to do with that. Essentially getting some of the funding committed for construction of some of the pieces of phases one through three, and also continuing with a chunk of acquisitions. On the middle table on the back page, that identifies the planned activities that we had submitted to the State Water Commission as a part of their process of developing their overall budget going into the next biennium. So if legislators cross-reference the state water plan with what our request is, they're going to see a consistent request of $127 million. That's what we've requested from the Water Commission. The original request that went into them was for $119 million, and that number may ring a bell to some people, $119 million. But that request was revised upward based on the state's willingness to go to a 65% cost share versus a 60%. So basically, they agreed to pay more, so their share gets to go up accordingly. Now, the executive budget that was released includes a recommendation for $70 million for the project, and that's what's outlined in the bottom table. It essentially identifies what we would do if the executive budget were to hold true. So essentially, what we'd be looking at is constructing phases one, two, and three, and continuing with a modest amount of acquisitions. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my briefing, subject to your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ackerman?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Strait?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, I'm just curious, with the budget being the way -- the budget situation in the state being the way it is, do you foresee a proposal for a slight reduction in this? You know, we're proposing $70 million, it seems. Do you feel that that's -- you feel pretty confident in that, or do you see that as they're going to try to cut away at it?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Strait, I guess in terms of confidence, I -- quite frankly, I -- we're going to stay engaged in the process and do our best to advocate on behalf of the basin. Exactly what the mood of the legislature is, clearly everybody's in cost-cutting mode right now. In fact, the revenue forecasts for the Resources Trust Fund were just reduced by about $25 million. So that's, you know, very likely going to equate to some form of a cut across the overall program. So certainly, there's going to be some questions with regard to potentially bonding, of which there's a limited appetite at the legislature, or at least it seems that there is. But I think as the revenue forecasts become clearer, keep in mind, we're at the very beginning of this process. Right now, it's being heard by the House. It'll work its way through the House process, and then at crossover, which is going to come toward the end of February, it's going to switch over to the Senate side. The Senate's going to have their own form of the bill ultimately. And there'll be very likely new revenue projections that come in kind of during that -- during the meantime, so there'll be some more clarity to this picture. But it's a long session, and we're going to have to stay engaged throughout it, because this is not -- very likely not going to be a bill that gets passed and inked by the governor early on.
Other questions, Mr. -- Alderman Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, based on the proposed executive budget, there's, from what I can tell, two key pieces missing to protect that what we call low-hanging fruit. What would be your suggestion for us as a council and the citizens of Minot to try to -- that our legislators or possibly our governor know how important this is to help you secure additional funds so that these projects can be filled?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Schuler, I would say learn about what we need and show up. We, you know, honestly, we can't do this by ourselves. Dan and I, just to be completely honest, we're at every single meeting. We're making our case. We're making the concern, you know, letting our concerns be heard. But what we really need is support. And it doesn't mean that people have to come down there and testify. You don't got to come down and tell the story. But I really think that there is value in being present, letting the legislators know that, hey, we're here. The community really needs this. You know, this isn't a couple of staff people down here advocating for a project. That would be my ask, I guess, of you folks.
Mr. Mayor, if I might follow up real quick? Then I would hope, since we do have media in the audience, that they would share that with the citizens, because, you know, it's one thing for us to show up and people might think the same thing, but this is imperative for all of us as an entire community. So I would hope that the media would share with the citizens these meetings as well. And we would ask that they would be present at those meetings, because we need this. We need these pieces. We need this funding. So that's all. Thank you.
Alderman Padrigula?
Mr. Ackerman, would it be helpful if the council submitted, if we haven't already, a formal resolution asking for state funding in the amount of $127 million or more?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padrigula, I would say that that formal request has been made through the budgeting process, but it certainly wouldn't -- it wouldn't hurt. I guess I'm not certain what particular additional weight that would carry in this context.
I'd like to give you as much ammunition as possible, and I'd like to formally express the will of the council if that should be it, which I believe, and from my point of view, it would be. You know, budget cutting may be the current thing down in Bismarck, but protection of life and property also is important, too.
Other questions for Mr. Ackerman?
Question for Mr. Ackerman? No. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, just one final thing. I did pass out a map just to kind of give people a feel for the current state of the basin. There's been a lot of talk about the snowpack that we have and things like this. So what this map identifies is basically three different snapshots in time. One was June 4th, or last week. That's the top map. The middle one is from June 4th of 2011. And then the bottom one is March 27th of 2011, so right before the main runoff occurred. So this kind of gives people a picture of how much snowpack is out there relative to where we were previously. If you look at the current map of what is up there right now, I would say there's less snow, particularly in the Canadian portions of the basin, than what there was in 2011. So I hope that that gives people some --
And those dates were January 4th?
Yes. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have snow laid here, but not quite there.
[laughing]
Alderman Padrigula, you?
Yeah, just a question. Would it be appropriate to introduce a motion to give Mr. Ackerman some more support?
It wouldn't be inappropriate.
Okay, I'd like to introduce a motion. We, as the city council, go on record asking for an allocation of a minimum of $127 million from the state for flood protection for the city of Minot and its citizens.
Seconded by Withis. No, Strait, I'm sorry.
Give it to George. It's okay.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Schumento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Strate?
Yes.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Franzfog?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Kosin?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pankow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other questions for Mr. Ackerman? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience care to address the council on any item that is not on our agenda? See, no one. Item number six is a -- I have a couple of things here. The first thing is I want to welcome Tom. I encourage you to do so soon. A couple of meetings I've been attending, I met with, along with Task Force 21, with Senator Hoven on December 14th regarding the new defense budget bill. That same day, we also met with Major General at that meeting, and I think -- because that's all in any way that we can. On December 19th, MADC was able to announce a new addition to the community with skyscopes, a drone operating company that we're thrilled to have here. On December 30th, a group of us, including Alderman Janser, John McMartin, and Senator Burghart, and I went down to meet with Governor Burgum on a number of items. The first one was about base retention, and to explain to him the impact of Minot Air Force Base to our state, and that with a billion-dollar impact, Minot Air Force Base is more than half of that. A billion-dollar impact statewide, Minot is way over 50% of that. We also talked about the flood plan and the dollars involved, and reiterated that we want to keep the percentage that was that the former governor included, unless we can do better. We're always open to that. And then we also spent a great deal of time talking about his Main Street initiative and how that may impact Minot. On January 4th, we had a brief meeting, again with Alderman Janser and I, a brief meeting with the Secretary of the Air Force, Deborah James, and General -- the improvement --
Well, force improvement.
Force improvement program, which has really been very helpful. Those are kind of a overview of some of the meetings. I do have two different sets of appointments, the first one being appointing Kent Kosin to the Service Basin Planning Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Hedberg.
Move the appointments.
We get a favorable ruling in February for the project. A lot of the money has been diverted while that's been in litigation. We'll have to redeploy funds to essentially move that project forward. If the ruling is unfavorable, meaning it's not advantageous for the city, then our cost estimate goes down because of course we won't be able to make as much progress on the project and on that project. Continuing on the discussion of financial information, our debt has increased. Based on looking at reviewing the information, our debt's increased about 165% in the past four years. Understandable given some of the circumstances related to the flood and some of the other activities that have been occurring since. That means that per capita debt was about $989 in 2012, it's gone up to $2,600 or just north of that in 2016. Currently, the city's indebted about $104 million with over 60 million of that tied directly to growth. Debt is slated to grow by about 100, not by, but to 132 million by the end of this particular fiscal year. A particular concern is not only how much debt we're holding, but for the period, the length of time we're holding this debt, as our periods are going from 10 now to 15 and even to 20 years. That means it's going to cost us more over the long term. I already mentioned the infrastructure here, so I'll skip over that. Revenue, just really quickly, not much better news here. Revenue from state aid, this is sales tax distributions have fallen 30%, and our city sales tax is down about 20% as well. And as you know, those are the two mainstreams for revenue for the city for non-enterprise funds. So we've already started to make some adjustments as a team. I'm sitting with the staff, we're talking about which kinds of projects we might be able to hold or delay. Got about 13 million, they're up here on the screen for you here, $13 million that we're going to at least initially have identified for delaying. We're going to be continuing to work with the team to identify additional opportunities. There's going to need to be further adjustments made, guaranteed, and we'll be working with the team to do that. We'll be working with department heads. We're going to be proposing some changes to current and future budgets and capital plans. We also want to encourage the reevaluation of the first and second penny sales tax. And then finally, we'll be working closely with elected officials on a consolidated plan to move forward. Lastly, I have, just a finance director search, be great to have that position filled sooner than later. Unfortunately, I don't have very good news for you. The, we have three applicants thus far in the process. Since we've advertised for the position, only one of three meets the expected qualifications. Prothman has mailed 1,400 direct mailers and has advertised in more than a dozen different venues. To be quite frank with you, it's probably the worst time of the year you could be advertising for staff positions. And so we're hopeful that as we get out of this time of year, we'll be a little bit more productive in trying to find somebody that is qualified to take that position. So with that, I stand for any questions you might have, otherwise we can continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Alderman Padrigula.
Mr. Straight was first, I think.
I call on the people.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to publicly thank and Mr. Berry and recognize from my point of view, an excellent report. I'm particularly pleased to get data on our financial situation and some of the risks and threats that we face. I have a meeting with you, I think, tomorrow, and we'll go over this in more length, but I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing. I think you're off to a very good start, and I appreciate the information you've given us this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Straight?
I'll second Alderman Padrigula, but I, Mr. Berry, if you could consider the emergency declarations, if we can move those into advance prior to the storm, I'm sure this has come up in your conversations. We clearly know a storm's coming. Instead of us having to wait for a storm and then declare it a disaster, if there's a way to do that in advance, like hurricanes, for example, you know, then maybe Dan and yourself, you can activate resources. We could start, you know, getting that in from, just some food for thought.
Thank you, Alderman Straight. We have actually declared the first emergency back in November. I don't know if that was widely known or not by the Public Works Director. The one that we declared was declared after the fact, after we started really looking at the resources that we had and capabilities of the city, so, but it's an excellent point.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Mayor, members of the council, City Attorney Hendershot prepared a written report, which is enclosed in your packets, and I can attempt to answer any questions about that report.
Any questions for the City Attorney? Okay, thank you. Item number eight is consider the report of the Finance and Improvements Committee. Alderman Franz Vogt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had 15 items on our agenda. Item 14, although it's on our agenda, was held in committee, so I would move consent agenda on items one through 13 and then also 15.
Seconded by Lehner. For those of you in the audience, this means that these items will be passed as they came out of committee. If you're here to speak about one of those items, let me know and I'll pull it for discussion. Otherwise, it'll be passed as it came out of committee. Call the roll.
Franz Vogt?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Kosen?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panko?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alderman Franz Vogt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you. Item number nine is consider the report of the Public Works and Safety Committee. Alderman Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had 24 items on our agenda, and I would move to pass all 24 items on consent. Second.
Seconded by Olson. Discussion? Anybody want anything pulled? I think I would like to pull number 24 just for a clarification. So one through 23, as it came out of Public Works, anybody want any of those items pulled? Call the roll.
Schuler?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Franz Vogt?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Kosen?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Who did that? Alderman Sitma. I think the reason why I wanted to pull this was only because is the ad hoc portion of the motion, I think that the Public Works and Safety Committee is perfectly situated to handle everything that the ad hoc committee would do. So instead of forming another committee that's going to do the work that something very easily could be handled by the Public Works and Safety Committee, that's why I pulled it and wanted to discuss that. Alderman Padrigula.
I would concur with your impressions, Mr. Mayor. I think particularly with the kind of leadership we're seeing from the new city manager, I think we can certainly do that in our committee if the committee chair would agree with that. What I was pushing for was a systematic look at this issue. That was the key thing. It didn't matter to me whether it was a staff committee, or staff working group, or committee of the city council, including citizens. The importance was a systematic look, and I think we're already seeing that. So I think, and we've already generated several suggestions that I hopefully we can carry on, so we may need to have this as an item on our agenda for the committee for a couple of meetings, and maybe broadly call for more public input. So I think we're making some progress, and I don't think it would take very long to get us, get the objective that I wanted accomplished.
I agree with your objectives completely. So the motion is to form the ad hoc. Alderman Schuler?
May I amend the motion to send it back to Public Works with the hopes that within a few meetings, we could make a recommendation?
Second.
Well, no, Alder, you're amending the original motion or amending it?
Amending the original rather than doing the ad hoc to send it back to Public Works.
All right.
To rework.
Okay, Alderman Sitma. You were the second.
I would concur with Mr. Schuler.
Okay, I was hoping you would. Okay, we, the motion now is to, is instead of sending it to an ad hoc committee, sending it to Public Works and Safety. Any discussion on that? Any discussion? Call the roll. Passes. Before we move off of Public Works, as you're considering the options for, on your committee, Alderman Schuler, I think that one thing that we could do a better job with as a city during these events is ticketing and towing, getting these vehicles out of the streets so that we can make them absolutely as wide as possible. So if you would take that under consideration. Does that conclude your report?
That does conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Schuler. Item number 10 is consider the report of the Airport Committee. Alderman Olson?
Mr. Mayor, we had three items on our agenda. I would move approval on all three items.
Second.
Seconded by Janser. Again, all three of these items will be passed as they came out of committee. Any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Panko?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Franz Vogt?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Kosen?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Olson. Item number 11 is consider the report of the Liquor and Gambling Control Committee. Alderman Hedberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had eight items on our agenda. I've been asked to pull number eight. Would move consent on one through seven.
Second.
Seconded by Withis, I think.
I'd like one pulled, please.
Which one?
One.
One? So the motion now is for two, three, four, five, six, and seven? Correct? If you would like any of these items pulled, please let me know, and I'll pull those items for further discussion or consideration. See, no one? Call the roll.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Kosen?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panko?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Withis?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Franz Vogt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alderman Hedberg, item number one.
I would move item number one.
Second.
An ordinance amendment for licensees to close at certain times was seconded by, I think, Withis. Yep. Alderman Kosen?
I just wanted to offer perspective on the difference it can make closing an hour later than an hour earlier, like we are now. I believe that that is what's on the table, is changing it to state law, which is 2:00 a.m. I did some research, because I'm kind of a dork like that, and I spent some time on the NHTSA website, and it's just one obstacle one has to overcome when thinking about alcohol and consumption of controlled substances. In the year 2014, there were 32,675 people that we lost on the roadways in the country. Now, granted, this is on the national scale. Of those 32,000, 11,731 of them had some sort of alcohol in their system. Now, that's not terribly surprising. I think the number that really struck me in this particular instance is that only 1,764 of those had blood alcohol contents below the legal limit. 9,967 were above the legal limit. And once again, this is maybe speculation, but I would argue that providing people an extra hour to consume alcohol may not seem like a big deal, but if it's, but if you break it down to being a .06 or a .09, your odds of being involved in a crash that could kill somebody increases exponentially. So I want this body to really truly consider the safety aspect of one hour. Like I said, it doesn't sound like much, but it literally can make the difference, really increase your odds of possibly being even hurt by a factor of 10 at least. So that was the only reason that I wanted number one pulled, is just so this body really truly considers the difference an hour can make.
Thank you, Alderman Kosen. Alderman Padrigula?
As someone who works a lot in the area of health psychology, I wanted to second your remarks in terms of public safety implications. Also, as someone who's worked in crisis intervention services here in this and other communities, it isn't just driving. It's people getting into fights, it's being drunk disorderly, coming home, and all sorts of things happening. If we push the closing time till 2:00, we will be starting to push, I think fairly close to the time when people get in their cars, get home, start fighting, start fussing, all that kind of stuff. So we're looking, you know, 2:15, 2:30, 2:45, and as I understand it, our shift goes off duty at 3:00 in the morning. So they're going to be kind of pushing, I suspect, well, they'll be incurring more overtime. These, you know, drunken situations take a while to resolve. I've been involved in those kinds of things my entire career, and 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, it's not a real good time to try to help people calm down. And we're talking here about normal people, not people who have some serious mental illness or something. So that's something I'm very concerned about. I mean, it's nice on the one hand to have a law uniform with, or ordinance uniform with state law, but that's just pushing it later into the evening, and, you know, whether it's first responders, mental health professionals, law enforcement officers, you know, when you're talking about intervening at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, you're not going to be terribly sharp, and I'm just concerned about the extra load and the safety considerations too.
Further discussion? Anyone else? Any bells? Anybody in the audience? Any further discussion? Alderman Olson?
Mr. Mayor, and maybe this question should be directed to Alderman Hedberg. I'm not exactly sure, but in the ad hoc committee, was it considered that doors could stay open till 2:00 a.m., but the last service was at 1:00 a.m.? Was that ever considered?
The ad hoc committee, I believe, was chaired by Alderman Franz Vogt.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can answer that. Maybe Mr. Franz Vogt can too. But that was a discussion, I guess that was at all the ad hoc committee meetings, and there was a discussion about not necessarily serving till 1:00. I think it was 1:30 was the discussion, but that was not ultimately approved. The approval was directly with state law, in line with state law.
Alderman Franz Vogt, did he get that right?
Yeah, the business owners wanted the ability to close, stop serving alcohol at 1:00, but stay open till 2:00 to get people out of their business at that time. So.
Alderman Olson?
So I guess I'm not clear on that. When is the last time that alcohol can be served? Is it 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m.?
Two.
Okay.
Further discussion? Alderman Withis?
When we were discussing this law, a lot of the bar owners had expressed the concern about closing at 1:00 and not serving alcohol anymore, but having the ability for customers to get cabs without having to wait outside in sub-zero weather, things like that. So that was one of the concerns, to stay open till 2:00.
But that wasn't what was approved?
No, that wasn't what was approved. They could still serve alcohol, but those were some of the reasons that they wanted to stay open. Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Kosen?
Would move to just send one back to the liquor and gambling to see?
We got a motion on the floor. I think we'd have to defeat that before we consider another one. Somebody else over here wanted to comment, I think. No? Okay, we can amend the motion.
I'd move that we amend the motion to allow the establishments to stay open till 2:00, but only to serve alcohol till 1:00.
Second.
Okay, now, discussion on the amended motion. Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that when this conversation came up, then you revert back to the business owners who raised this issue, then their concern is Then their concern is having to have staff on for an additional hour paying for that. I'm just trying to remember from that ad hoc committee so that, that was one of the valid points. And since I don't see them in the audience unless... Unless, Mr. Miller, you want to take a crack at that? I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
I think you did.
But I think I just did.
Mike Miller, 808 Fifth Street, Northeast. With the 2:00 closing or the 1:00 closing, that's absolutely have to have all bodies outside your doors. So as at all, yes, as at all bar restaurants, we have to stop serving alcohol around 12:30 to get everybody, everybody out of the building by 1:00. So by moving to 2:00, you're still doing the same thing here. But all bodies have to be out by that 2:00 or 1:00 range. Go ahead.
Alderman Padrigula?
Would it, as a single establishment owner, would it be problematic for you if you could be selling liquor until 1:00 and then giving your patrons up to another hour to finish up, to have something to eat and find a cab, et cetera, et cetera?
It would not be problematic, no. But they're there. You know? It could be problematic, I guess you could say. I guess I don't want to speak for everybody, for myself. I would not want somebody just sitting there the whole time, just hanging out, possibly causing problems just because they know they can by law.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller? Alderman?
Mr. Miller, this, if we were to change it as it sits, as it came out of committee, it doesn't require you to stay open till 2:00, does it?
That's correct.
Okay, so you could close your doors at, you could stop serving at 1:00 and then close your doors at 1:30 per your own discretion, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good.
Further questions for Mr. Miller?
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion on the amendment? The amendment? Alderman Schuler?
Thank you. I have some real concerns that we are changing this as it came out and that the people who were instrumental in this being the way it is are not here to give their input right now. And I'm afraid that there may be some unintended consequences. Really, if we do anything with it, I do really think it needs to be re-vetted, in my opinion. So that was the comment I wanted to make.
Discussion on the amendment. Alderman Padrigula?
I'd be fine with withdrawing my amendment if it were okay with the second and sending it back to committee to make sure there are no unintended consequences.
Who made the second?
Olson.
Olson?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The amendment is off the floor. The original motion is on the floor. What's the procedure for sending it back to committee? Does that take precedence, or do we have to vote on the motion? We have a motion on the floor. The wishes of the council seem to be to send it back to the committee. And I'm wondering which one takes precedence.
I would go on the motion.
Okay. Did everybody hear her opinion? Her opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, is that to vote this motion down and then introduce another motion, sending it back to committee. Okay? Everybody understand that? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Let's call the roll on the original motion as it came out of committee.
Hedberg?
No.
Janser?
No.
Cosson?
No.
Lehner?
No.
Olson?
No.
Panko?
No.
Padrigula? No.
Schuler?
No.
Shmento?
No.
Sitma?
No.
Straight?
No.
Withus?
No.
Berg?
No.
Franz Bog?
Yes.
Motion fails. We're in line for Alderman Padrigula.
I would move that we send this back to committee to look at that specific issue of potential unintended consequences with changing the closing time.
I'd like to clarify the motion. We're sending it back to the Liquor Committee, right?
Yes.
Not the ad hoc?
Liquor.
Yep, okay, good. Agreed?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. Discussion? Call the roll.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Schuler?
Yes.
Shmento?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Withus?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Franz Bog?
Yes.
Hedberg?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Cosson?
Yes.
Lehner?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panko?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight, or 11-8, Mr. Hedberg?
I would move number eight, the public consumption of alcoholic beverages restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Berg. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Sitma?
There's been several conversations via email and other discussions from some other business owners that have deep concerns over, I think, what Miss Schuler had just alluded to about unintended consequences and some gray areas that it creates for some different businesses that either want to be able to allow their customers to have a beverage while they're shopping or to possibly, you know, be able to offer a beverage under some different circumstances, whether it be retail or otherwise. My concern on this, it's a flat blanket, and it may perhaps create more work on special permitting for some of the different events through some of the different, whether it be retail or what have you for businesses. My concern is it's just a flat blanket trying to solve a problem, which we do have a problem. We do have some areas that need to be cleaned up. I think with some of the different, for lack of a better term, speakeasies that have developed. But I don't feel strongly that this ordinance before is the clear-cut answer to solving it. I think that some language could be drawn up to, I think, address all concerns.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Alderman Hedberg?
I would concur with Alderman Sitma. I think there's some things that we need to address with it yet. And I guess I can't support it the way it is right now, and I think we should review that.
Okay. Further discussion? Alderman Lehner?